Thank you and welcome everyone. Christina, can you call the roll?
Yep. Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Mayor Lombard?
Here. Thank you. First item is to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have four sets of minutes to approve. August 13th briefing meeting, August 17th regular meeting, August 20th and 27th special meetings. Can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes as presented. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Bills and claims were submitted with the agenda totaling $1,099,972.91. Can I have a motion to approve? Motion is second to approve the bills and claims as submitted with the agenda. Any questions from council? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have consent calendar items to approve platts of lot 1B, 2B, 3B, 4B and 5B of the Louestra condominium addition and platts 1A and 2 in the block 7 of the Thad Tabor Estates addition. Motion? Motion is second to approve the consent calendar as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public input portion of the agenda now. Anybody wishing to address the council may do so at this time?
Good evening. Chuck Parsons, 600 North Yellowstone. I'm here tonight representing the Brandon Development Foundation regarding the Corson Railroad Crossing. About three years ago while working on the railroad spur into the Roebang Industrial Park denisols and myself met at our engineer's office with Jeff Cooley of CDI regarding the design of the new spur as well as to repair the Corson Crossing. At that time Jeff stated that we had three options to repair it. We could grind it, which we tried to do and no bids came in. We could replace the concrete with asphalt. Third option would be to install drain tile, replace the concrete and asphalt strips. His recommendation at that time was the third choice, which is option number two in your packet. If this gets put out to bid, I don't think that we'll know the specifics of the material costs until the bid is let and the bid can always be rejected if costs seem unreasonable as determined by Tammy. Brandon Development Foundation has agreed to pay $10,000 towards the engineering design work done by CDI. Hope everybody remembers that they're one of our, that they're the region's expert in railroad work. We've also been able to gain agreement from other organizations to contribute $20,000 towards repair option number two. The Brandon Development Foundation is recommending you choose option number two tonight. Thank you for your consideration on that recommendation.
Thank you Chuck. Anyone else wishing to address the council may do so at this point? Seeing or hearing none, we'll move along. We have a public hearing on a retail malt beverage and South Dakota wine license for Bauer Enterprises LLC at 604 North Teton Drive.
Planning and zoning approved a conditional use permit for the alcohol at that location Thursday.
Any questions from council or input from the public?
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Motion to a second to approve the malt beverage license for Bauer Enterprises LLC. Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second public hearing we have is for Alliance Communications and Mid-Continental Cable TV franchise applications. Any questions or comments from the council?
Can we do them together or separate?
We'll handle them together. I'm just having the public hearing on both of them right now. Council questions?
Yes, I had a resident contact myself and Tammy about the pedestal placements. We, we had given them a waiver that they could put the pedestal up on top of the ground. They didn't have to be underneath the ground. And so this resident is concerned with that and asked me to bring that forward for discussion purposes. I, I don't know that there's anything we can do about it, but I did say I would bring it up.
Administration, I was trying to, I was forwarded that email from council member Fish and I was trying to recall back at the council meeting. My memory isn't the greatest, but I remember something along the lines that with present pedestals there, that it would be in conjunction with that they could put above the ground pedestal at that location. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's accurate and first of all, I think that would be relevant to our waiver, but not necessarily whether or not they were fit to do, be given a franchise and that's the issue before the council right now, whether or not they should be given a franchise. Whether or not you need any more information regarding whether or not to give them a franchise. But to answer the question in the franchise agreement, we do have, in the event that either of them are given a franchise, we do have a date by which the waiver of the pedestal is in effect and when they'd have to come back to the council if they want to place any pedestals above the ground. I'm trying to find that in the agreement right now, but I, in terms of whether or not they're fit to be given a franchise, I don't think that's relevant to this issue right now before the council.
I did think it was fit, so that's why I continued it to be brought up. Any public comment on the public hearing on the cable TV franchise agreements?
I have a question. William Gast, I live out at the Estates just east of the golf course. I must admit I haven't kept up on this as well as I might have. I understand you're saying that they have permission to put in pedestals where there already are pedestals. Can I get a clarification or is an explanation of what that actually means? In other words, are you saying in the neighborhood, if there are any existing pedestals with Alliance or Sioux Valley or whatever, that then Midco or Alliance can go along and just install other ones? Can somebody clarify that for me?
Tammy?
So that is correct. If they are in the neighborhood already, then they are allowed to put up the pedestal above ground.
To clarify, it does, Sioux Valley Energy is not included in that. It's just the Alliance.
Sioux Valley has pedestals now, Alliance has now. So I'm saying in the neighborhood, is that what you mean by this? That then Midco can add more?
Yes, and that we do encourage them to group those all together, but they certainly don't have to.
And they're not now out in my neighborhood. Every other house has one.
Right.
Yeah, so about a month ago, maybe two months ago at this time, there was a discussion before the council on whether or not they had to bury the lines or they could have pedestals. And they were granted the ability to place above ground pedestals at a hearing that was before the council and notice. So the council gave them permission to do that. And in the event they, after a certain period of time, they need to put new lines in, they have to come to the council and ask for permission to do a pedestal versus in ground. But right now, about two months ago, a month ago, they were given that ability to do that.
They're no longer doing work in our neighborhood. Are you suggesting then that they're, that they're done with what you gave them permission to do and that when they come back, then they've got to put them underground?
I don't know what work they're doing in your specific neighborhood. All I can tell you is that the council granted permission for them when they were laying all the lines down right now to put the lines in a pedestal above the ground as opposed to under the ground. Now whether they've completed the work in your neighborhood, I don't know. They're trying, they were working on easements and trying to get things and so it may be that there are more pedestals coming in your area. That's something that you, we'd have to actually ask Midco. They would have to get the information out. So they've been granted the ability to have the pedestals through the waiver, through the motion that was made.
And they can actually put these in a person's front yard and they're not really small. Mr. Reed tells me the easement at my house is in the front yard.
Yes.
Which I can't say I'm real happy about.
Right, so there's a right of way in the front along the street, which would be in your front yard. I know that they were communicating with homeowners, the ability to put them in the backyards if the homeowner wanted to give an easement and whether or not they were doing that to everybody or not, I don't know. But there is an easement in the right of way next to the street for utilities such as Midco, Alliance, Sioux Valley to put utilities in there. And they have that ability to do that regardless of whether or not we want them to put it in the right of way or not.
When you say next to the street, which side, which side of the sidewalk are you talking? What I call the terrace or on the landowner's property per se itself?
Well, there's like a, depending on where you're at, the street might be a 66-foot area and so the street may only be 40. So kind of depends on where you're at, but the right of way goes into, people's boulevards oftentimes are thought of as private property, but that's actually a right of way. So I can't tell you your specific.
Right.
But the right of way goes along the street and can be into what you consider to be your yard, but it's actually the right of way.
Yeah, I don't consider the, what you call a boulevard to be my property. So your understanding is it has to go in what you call a boulevard. I grew up calling it a terrace, but whatever.
No, no, no.
It, it depends on where it is. I mean, I don't have your specific information. The right of way is along the street into what you would consider the terrace or yard. How far, I can't tell you. I'd have to look at the plaque.
The boulevard, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, the boulevard is not necessarily the, the end of the right of way.
In Mr. Gast's case, he has a sidewalk in his front yard, so the right of way is on the back edge of that sidewalk. If I remember correctly, there's also a 10-foot easement?
In the back you're saying now?
No, in the front.
In the front. I don't think you told me how wide it would, not that I remember.
Yeah, I can't, I can't recall exactly, but there's an additional utility easement outside of the right of way in the front yard or it's along Country Club. I'd have to look at the plaque again.
Sure.
Those change depending on the street or the?
Yeah, you know, Country Club's kind of unique. On the west side of the road, there's a 10-foot easement or part of it and then it stops and it starts up again about 100 feet north. So there's, oh, the council one of those plaid. But in this case, I think there's an easement outside of the right of way, which would be on the property owner's property.
I would say this on this whole issue. It's concerning to me that I've gotten several emails from residents that have used the word threaten when it deals with Midco. Threaten to put it on your front yard, threaten to do this, threaten to do that. Now, I don't know those words for sure. That is emails coming from the residents, but that is, I've received several of those emails and that does concern me. When a company is coming in here and using the terminology threaten to the, to the homeowner. Whether that has a substantial bearing on the franchise agreement, up to debate, I guess that'll be. We can debate here. Thank you for your input, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public on the public hearing portion?
Sorry. Andrew Curley, Director of Government Relations with Midco, I just, well, I'll be very brief, but I mean, I think in regards to the, the issue of being threatened, I assure you that's never the intention of Midco. I think the communication we've had with folks about easements is if we aren't able to go in the backyard, what is the option? And then we say, well, the option would be in the front yard and that would be where we'd have to put our infrastructure. I assure you it's not intended to be a threat. It's supposed to kind of talk through the options. We absolutely would prefer to go in the backyard, the easements where, where is that's available. But if, if the question becomes to us, well, what if I don't give you that easement? Then we say, well, there is a public right of way.
I'm going to tell you, one or two emails with that terminology, I would agree with what you're saying. Four or five emails with that terminology. I think you have, need to have a conversation with the people that are dealing with our public.
I noted and we will be sure to follow up with them to make sure that's not, that's certainly not our intention to threaten anybody, but just have a conversation about what the options are. So I just wanted to weigh in on that since I know it came up.
Thank you. Other questions from the public? Comments from the council?
I will abstain from this one.
I'm sorry, Tim.
I'm standing to vote on this.
Okay. With that being said, I'll close the public hearing portion of the franchise agreement and I will entertain a motion to issue a cable TV franchise agreement to both Alliance Communications and Midco Communications. In the, subject to the terms set forth in the draft finance franchise agreement on pages 30 to 51 of the council packet. Motion is second to approve the cable TV franchise agreement as delineated in the council packet. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Actually Christina, call the roll so we can get Tim on the record as abstaining.
Yep. Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Staying.
And Parliament?
Aye.
Very good. Protocol with this, now we need to have a separate motion for each N and D. That motion, I'll start with Alliance Communications would be to approve the cable TV franchise agreement between the city of Brandon and Alliance Communications as presented. Motion is second to approve the cable TV franchise agreement with Alliance Communications. Any questions?
So Lisa, in the franchise agreement, the waiver is not part of it?
So in the? The pedestal waiver?
Yes.
They have not asked for a pedestal waiver, so in the franchise agreement with respect to Alliance, they would have to come in after today's date and ask to place a pedestal above the ground. That's Alliance's. When you look to the next one, Midco would have to come back in July 7th, 2021, which is the day after you granted the waiver previously. So it's mentioned in both of them when they'd have to come back before you.
Further questions? Christina, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Staying.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we'll have a motion to approve the cable TV franchise agreement between the city of Brandon and Midco Communications as presented. Motion?
A move.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the cable TV franchise agreement with Midco. Any further questions from council? Hearing none. Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Staying.
And Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries 3-1. One stating? Is that?
Yeah.
Bryan says yes.
That's good.
Yeah, it's not appropriation. Majority of the, of the form.
Motion carries. Thank you. Very good. Moving on to old business, we have a second reading of ordinance 612, special tax classifications. Brian, quickly review that again.
It, it allows or gives a tax abatement for new commercial construction so that the first year there's 0% of it is taxed. The second year it's 20, the third year is 40, fourth year is 60, the fifth year is 80 and then in the sixth year it finally goes up to full value for taxation.
Intent is to align with Minnella County?
Correct, in the state.
In the state. Motion is second to approve second reading of ordinance 612 as presented. Any further questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a new hire for the golf course. Mason Stark is a cart tech position at $9.30 an hour. Could I have a motion? Motion is second to approve Mason Stark at 9:30 an hour as a cart tech position. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have pay app number one on a golf course flood repair project to Landscapes Unlimited in the amount of $67,510.23. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve pay app number one to Landscapes Unlimited for $67,510. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under Parks and Rec, we have a request to use Pioneer Park for a disc golf tournament from Michael Gross to run concurrent with the Graff House Historical Society Open House, which the date on that is?
Try? October 3rd.
October 3rd?
Correct.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve that golf, disc golf.
Second.
And that approve authorizes vendors as well?
Okay, motion is second to approve the use of Pioneer Park with the disc golf, for a disc golf tournament by Michael Gross to include food vendors. Any further questions? On October 3rd?
What's the Graff cabin?
The Graff cabin is the historical cabin that's located in Pioneer Park. It used to be up on, I always forget, Riverwood Circle. It's the, it's the oldest house in town.
Right, 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 okay.
It was built before I was born, Jack. It's really old.
Yeah, the Historical Society's been renovating it for the last year or two.
Cool.
My memory refresh, I kind of remembered it, but, okay.
With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Pay app number one for the pool improvement project to Beck and Holfer Construction for $100,682. Motion to approve that?
Second.
Motion is second to approve pay app number one to Beck and Holfer Construction for the pool project, pool improvement project in the amount of $100,682. Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public safety, we have a police report and an inspection report. We also have a request to declare surplus to Ford Explorers 2013 and 2015 Ford Explorers as surplus property. Could I have a motion?
A move.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the two Ford Explorers 2013, 2015 as surplus property. Brian?
And Valley Springs Fire Department has expressed interest in obtaining one of them as a donation. I think what we'll do is let them choose which one they want and then we'll, we'll advertise for sale the other one.
Okay. Further questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Under administration, we have resolution 22-20, a petition for annexation of what I'll refer to as the Ristie property. Is there a better explanation than that?
Nope, that's.
If you would quickly take us through that again too?
Sure. The property owner, Ristie Family Trust, or Ristie Family Partnership has submitted a petition for annexation for the property outlined on page 79. This is part of the Great Bear Sand and Gravel Concept Plan that was submitted a meeting or two ago where they will, they would like to operate a sand mine for the next seven to 10 years. And then it would be reclaimed into a mixed-use, high-density residential and commercial property after that.
For the public's sake or concern, I've had a couple of questions on this, this project. And as I've tried to email to, to the residents that have contacted me on this, this is a project that is currently not within the city limits of Brandon.
Correct.
They are petitioning an annex into the city limits of Brandon. So that trying to be a good corporate partner, I'll say, or a good neighbor partner to bring the revenue that they generate have it subject to Brandon City sales tax, so we would generate the revenue from that. With that being said, this project would move forward if we denied any annexation into the city of Brandon. It would move forward as an outside project. The county would have jurisdiction over it, so it would move forward either way. So it's not really, the city of Brandon doesn't have a lot of jurisdiction over this, this whole thing. It appears like we do, I guess is what I'm going to say. It appears like we have a lot of jurisdiction over it, but we do not. We are bringing them into the city to try to recoup the sales tax over a project that is going to happen whether we do or we don't, in my opinion.
And Mayor, if I may, I've tried to explain that situation also, but I've had three residents reach out to me, Burkharts, McKinney's and Pudwells, concerned about traffic, noise, dust. And I said that I would forward that information to the council.
Correct me if I'm wrong though, when we spoke with it being in the city too, wasn't there some stuff that we talked about in regards to like alleviate some of the gravel? He talked about stuff that he could do spray, right? And like certain hours that we can basically work with them and we can if they're in the county.
If, if they're in the county, we, we would receive notice from the county for any rezone or conditional use permit affecting the property. We would be a neighboring property owner and that would be our input. If it's inside the city limits, there's, there's a couple more steps that need to take place in order for the mining to take place. One, the property will need to be rezoned, which includes a public hearing in front of the city, or the Planning and Zoning Commission first and then a public hearing in front of the city council as well as two readings of the ordinance amending the zoning code. The next step then would be the consideration of a conditional use permit by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that's where if the city has concerns- has concerns over the operation of the facility, they can place conditions on that permit. So, you know, I don't want to speculate what those would be now, but we can certainly talk with the applicant at that point in time and say, you know, these are the concerns we're hearing. Are you agreeable to these conditions that we would place on it? So there's at least three more public hearings involved with the project.
But I also want to be very clear with the public and the council. This is a project that we can do some things, but we also, it's a company that's coming in and trying to be a good neighbor with the city of Brandon. So this is not going to be shut down by the city of Brandon once it gets annexed in. I can assure you that that's not going to happen. We will do the best we can to try to address certain concerns, but it's going to be a sand mining, so there's going to be trucks that are going to- but, you know, we'll do the best we can on the whole thing. With that being said, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution 22-20. Motion is second to approve resolution 22-20 as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item D2, we have a discussion on the 2021 Construction Project Core Phase 2 versus the Rushmore Street Construction Project. Tammy or Brian?
I did include a tentative timeline from HDR as far as design goes, assuming that a contract's approved by the council for September 21st. Final design would be done. You know, in February, we'd be looking at a March 23rd bid date with an anticipated May construction start, depending on weather, of course. I always throw that out there. You know, that March 23rd bid letting is getting late.
Tammy, do you want to outline the memo that you sent to council for community purposes?
Just to give you a little bit of a recap of where we're at on both projects. Core area Phase 1, we are into Phase 1C, which was kind of a surprise. We had a perfect construction here. We got started really early. We started early April, that they were out there and tearing things up and grading and everything. With Phase 2, we wouldn't be able to start as early. So being able to finish all of Phase 2 in one year isn't very likely. Maybe we'll have a dry summer again, but we're kind of pushing it already with this one. One thing about it is they're also looking at paving probably mid-October for this year, which is, it's getting later, as it's already getting colder now. And then the Rushmore area project is already designed. Well, it's at 60% design. We were talking about doing a public meeting later this month. We had letters ready to go, and all of the temporary easements were printed out and ready to be mailed out as well. So Rushmore area is far along on the design, and we could bid that out early November, which means that would give them a really early start date as well.
And you said 60% design was done?
Right.
Guess that total was 100%.
No, we're going to have a little bit of cleanup to do in the plans when we talk to all the property owners. Because there's a lot of people who want to straighten their driveways, or they want us to try to save a tree, or, you know, they have some landscaping concerns. That sort of thing always kind of comes up at the last minute, which is one thing that we didn't do a very good job with on the first phase of the core area. A lot, we rushed that design, and so we didn't have that time to have that one-on-one conversation with those homeowners. And so we were trying to fix that in construction, which, when you try to change things, then you're kind of at the mercy of the contractor, and that's going to cost us more. So when you can slow down and do design for a whole year, then we have a chance to talk to homeowners, and we make sure that everything gets into the plans right away, so we're not trying to do change orders and amendments and that sort of thing after the fact, where we just didn't have time on that Phase 1. And I fear that on Phase 2, there's still a lot of unknowns, and if we can't get ahead of that and start talking to property owners, then we're going to have the same thing we had this year, where we're trying to add steps, and we run into retaining walls, and it gets expensive pretty quick. So I- Go ahead.
There was also some discussion about the possibility of just adding Second to be completed next year, 2021.
So-
Any discussions with HDR about that?
Yeah, and so the big problem with Phase 2 is we have some drainage issues. You know, it comes down from the elementary school, goes south, and then goes in between people's backyards. So the big problem with that is now we're going to be impacting those homeowners from the front of their house, plus the back of their house. And we don't have that design finalized yet, and so, you know, we have to run a model, well, they have to put together a model, and then we have to run to different scenarios, and then we'll have to talk to those homeowners about it. And it obviously takes more than one meeting with them. Personally, I think because it goes behind people's homes, it would be interesting to do a cost-benefit analysis on our design as far as if we design it for a five-year flood event versus like a 25-year flood event. You know, maybe it's just a, we're digging a hole there anyway. Maybe it's just the cost of materials for larger pipe that would benefit those homeowners quite a bit. I mean, those are all conversations that we need to have, and we need to have time to have those. And then we also need to be able to coordinate with homeowners and let them know what's going on and what they can expect. So those, that drainage needs to be figured out before we can go down into Second Avenue. So I don't know that we're really saving anything by saying, oh, let's just do Second Avenue and over, because we're still going to have to have the whole game plan for the second phase. And it's still going to go east of Second Avenue, because we have to put in a storm sewer.
Where is that, where is that storm sewer planted? That would be, I'm somewhat familiar, vaguely familiar, maybe not as much as I should, but it did used to live there, in that area. So are you talking about the storm sewer more or less on the south side of the football field? The elementary football field, or where are you, where is it?
Yeah, they have that track out there. It's just south of there. So like Third and Elm, there's a T-intersection right there. The water, really from like Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth, that water flows down and goes into like a concrete channel over top of the elementary school's property, just south of that track. And then it flows down to Elm Street, and then it crosses over Elm Street and goes behind people's homes. Then that's land that we don't own-
Second and Third, correct?
Right. Yep, and that's land that we don't own, nor do we have drainage easements through there. So as of right now, we don't even have the authority to go through there and maintain it. So we have a lot of little issues there to figure out.
I'm questioning how that affects Second, though.
So that all flows down through Second. So all of that drainage up there goes down through Second. So we need to design Second for either a five-year or a 25-year, or whatever we're going to do there. So we have to have the whole drainage plan designed before we do Second.
I lived on Second in that area, and I just don't ever recall any real issues with the drainage there. I know Third in that area, I mean, in between-
And it goes between those houses, and then it comes back out Jacob Thorson's house, and then it crosses the street right down, and then it goes down Cedar, and then it eventually makes it down to Main Avenue.
Okay.
It kind of zigzags through there. Where we would want to keep a lot of that storm sewer into Second and into Elm as much as we can, and get it out from behind those houses. But that is the natural flow path, so when there's a higher flood event, then it's going to go back there. And we just need to be able to plan for that.
Okay, thanks. Dana?
So my frustration or hesitation with this is, I mean, it sounds like we now don't have the time to plan and figure out the drainage and get the easements, but we've known that Phase 2 was coming after Phase 1. So that's where I really struggle, because we told the public what we're doing. We laid out a plan, and as somebody that previously sat and waited and waited and waited for a construction project to be done, and it continuously being delayed, it's really frustrating, and we've gone through a lot of political headache to get the court going, and I think we've got great momentum. So I really struggle just now saying that we can't do it because we have things to figure out, because we knew we had those things to figure out. I guess I would like to see us do something to keep the momentum moving forward on Phase 2. I understand that Rushmore is ready to go, but they're both supposed to be ready to go, and that's what we told the public. So I'd like to see some sort of compromised position where we find some way to move forward with at least part of Phase 2.
I would agree with Dana's end.
I wouldn't like to add that just because we're finishing up construction in Phase 1 this year, it really doesn't mean that we're done. Next year, we'll have to do the walkthrough, and we'll have to replace driveways that had cracked in sidewalks, and we're going to be replanting trees, and we're still going to be getting people's grass growing. Sometimes I think that last 10% of the project takes about 90% of the effort. So there's still going to be quite a bit going on through here. Plus, we're going to be having those sit-down meetings with each of those homeowners on Phase 2. So they're still going to see a lot of progress going on. But we do, at some point, need to get back into a schedule of we design one year and stop rushing all these projects, and then we build the next year. And then we reevaluate on if we can design for that next year, because we can't just- I mean, we're getting lucky that we can get the whole Phase 1 done this year. If we weren't going to get 1C done, we wouldn't be able to bid that next phase until that portion was done, because everything has to tie in together.
Well, I guess my concern is that, you know, we're looking at 10 years. I mean, we just really need to push it through faster than that, I think. So I don't know, so the next step would be Second Avenue based on what we've gotten done so far. Is that what we're saying? And that's where we have the drainage issues?
It is. It's one of the more problematic areas of the core area. After the second phase, a lot of the drainage is kind of figured out and done, and water sewers, too, so.
So originally, originally Phase 2 was Second, then Fourth, correct?
Yes. No, it doesn't go up to, yeah, it goes close to Fourth, but it's in between Third and Fourth.
Side streets up to Fourth?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's these side streets from Main over the, or-
And including Third.
Other comments from council?
I guess I also, I agree with Dana in that I sat in the meetings where we determined we were going to do this in five years. We had the money to do it. We determined that we were going to do Rushmore. I do think that since we sat in those meetings, there have been other discussions in the city that maybe take some precedence, right? We have a capital improvements plan that's coming up that I think that that will be eye-opening as far as what we can actually do moving forward with anything, actually. I guess my thoughts are, I think that we should construct the Phase 1 of Rushmore next year. And then I think we should take the next couple of months and actually put together a solid capital improvements plan, and at that time, we can say, this is what we're doing. This is the schedule we're adhering to. This is what we're doing moving forward. Most of that based upon how we do it, if we have time to do it, if we have the money to do it. I think at this point, as much as I would love to see the core area get done in five years, we have bigger discussions than just what phase, right? And if Rushmore is already ready to go, I think it would make sense to do that first. I mean, I just drove on those streets today, too, and they're not great either. So I guess that's my two cents.
Are we looking for direction here, Brian, to proceed forward with our-
Correct. Included in the budget ordinance, which is next, is the Rushmore project. If you wanted to change that to the Core Phase 2, we can make that change for the second reading. It would just be a matter of changing construction costs from-
Six million to 10 million.
To 10 million. And then the offsetting revenue as well with the bonds.
Well, it sounds like our engineer is recommending that we do the Rushmore project. Is that what I'm hearing? I'm not happy about that, but we need to have something done. Is it possible that when we design Phase 2, we can design Phase 3 both at the same time? If we have the finances, could we do it all, trying to move that schedule up? These poor people are going to be-
I agree.
So maybe, you know, maybe that's an option.
If I may, and I'm not being condescending when I say this, but I sat out there for 18 months watching the process on just getting the sewer system, which was the beginning project, to get the core going, delayed, bids rejected two or three times, if I recall right. Like I said, my memory isn't perfect, but, so I submit to you that a lot has been done. We got that project, which was the key to start the whole situation, get the sewer line thing. We're not there yet. It's a project from- and folks, it's been a long time since I've been sitting on the other side of the table, and that was 18 months of sitting out there, listening to that discussion, which predicated a lot of me trying to get over to the other side of this table. But with that being said, I have to say that there has been a lot accomplished here in the last year, 18 months, on this whole core situation. Core project, I'll call it core area project. So it's not that we haven't done anything. I don't want to portray that anyhow. So the budget has in it Rushmore, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And our administration is recommending proceed with Rushmore, with Core Area taking a year off, for lack of a better term?
Yeah, the also included in the budget is engineering, final design on the Core Phase 2.
Yeah, I apologize for that terminology.
That's cool.
So how many phases is Rushmore? I heard Tim say Rushmore Phase 1.
So originally, we planned on three phases. After looking at the budget and the capital improvement plan, we tried to do the first phase as planned, because that's where the biggest drainage issues come into play. Once that's done, then we can start taking side streets, and maybe we put it into four phases.
So what, so what are you, Tammy, are you thinking? If we do Rushmore next year, and then design Phase 2 next year for the core?
For the core.
And then flip-flop, do the core, and then wait Rushmore for a year?
Ideally, yeah.
So like every other year, we either do the core or Rushmore? Is that what you're thinking? Okay.
Yeah, or we split the Rushmore area into even smaller pieces and hit the core really hard. And we'll have those capital improvement plans, so I think we'll have some time to sit down and look at all of the projects that are coming up, too, because we have quite a bit of development that's starting to come through town, and that costs us also, that we weren't really planning on two years ago when we decided to do the core, so.
As part of the CIP process, the council will prioritize those projects. So for instance, if you wanted to continue with alternating years, you certainly could. If you wanted to move the core up and wait on Rushmore, you can certainly do that, too, but that'll be part of that prioritization process.
Don't correct me if I'm wrong, so if you're looking at three, maybe four phases, now we're looking at six to eight years? Okay, and originally, wasn't this all supposed to be done in three?
Five.
Five, was it? Okay.
Well, we looked- Well, we looked at it and it would be nice, but editorialize a little bit. It took us 30 years to get into this position. We can't get out of it in five to 10. These are some massive projects that we're looking at. So cash flow-wise, we really need to take a look and prioritize where those money should be spent. All of the projects that we're talking about, whether it's Rushmore or Core or any of the other projects that will be listed, they are all very worthy projects. The streets, you know, are in terrible condition. The sewer and water pipes are not good. So all of the projects have value and benefit to the community. It's just a matter of prioritizing those so that we have a blueprint moving forward. And what's going to dictate when they are done is actually cash flow.
So when was the last CIP done? Is it something we're supposed to be doing every five years?
We haven't had...
So that's why we're in this position now?
Yep.
Right.
Do we need to have a formal motion on this, or...
Yeah, I think a motion, one way or the other, to proceed with the budget with Rushmore construction in 2021 and Phase Two of the Core design finalized, or if you want to move to Phase Two of the Core next year.
Would anybody like to put that in the form of a motion?
I will, I'll make a motion that we continue with Rushmore Phase One and decide on Core Phase Two next year.
Is there a second? Motion is second to proceed with Rushmore Phase One and construction and design of Core Area Phase Two. Correctly stated. Further discussion?
I would like to add that I have been a very big proponent of finishing the Core in five years. I also thought we could get Rushmore done in three. I thought this was all going to happen. I do think that this capital improvement list that has come out has certainly changed some ways of thinking, I think.
So you've seen, I mean, I haven't seen anything with the CIP, so I think I'm kind of in the dark here, right? I mean, am I the only one? I guess I haven't seen any of that. So I...
We got a list that a couple of budget meetings ago.
Oh, that's the 21...
That's just the project.
2021 project.
This is 2021 project list.
That's not project.
That's not the whole CIP list.
Oh, no.
Okay, but we have to get the budget approved, right?
Correct.
To move, and then we're going to have several CIP work sessions? Is that what you're thinking?
Oh, yeah. We'll have probably, you know, park committee's going to work on theirs in the next park committee meeting, starting later this month. I would anticipate probably six work sessions between now and the end of the year that will work through that process. We will present the list, explain the projects. The council will need to take some time and digest those, start prioritizing those. And then, once the priority is done, Christine and I will sit down and start looking at cash flow and debt.
Won't we have to kind of look at some of that together? The debt and loan, debt and cash, and whatever along with projects?
Yeah, it's going to be a fairly lengthy process. After you prioritize the projects, we can then sit down and look at, okay, this project costs this much. We can finance it with sales tax or special assessments or revenue bonds or something like that. And then we'll bring that back to the council. And then if you want to move things around based upon debt and cash flow, that's the next step.
Further questions? Christina, I'll call a question.
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries three to two. Thank you. Yes, they are. Next item of business is Item D3, First Reading of Ordinance 613, the 2021 Budget Ordinance. Brian, Christina?
This is the budget we've been talking about the last month or so. The, as far as a couple of items, we talked about Thursday night. I did not change anything on benefits. I didn't get any real direction. I did not add any additional police wages. I don't know that there was a real direction last week on Thursday either. And then the Rushmore project is added in there as you just decided, so.
I'm all for adding more police wages, but I believe you said we're not able to do just one segment of personnel? Maybe it was someone else.
I need a motion to approve Ordinance 613.
I would make the motion to approve the reading of the budget.
First reading, I'm sorry. First reading of Ordinance 613, yes. And that's what it is, just the first reading of Ordinance 613. Motion is second to approve the first reading of Ordinance 613, which is the 2021 Budget Ordinance. Further comments, questions from the council?
I guess my other question is the health insurance. I don't think we clarified what our number was, or if it was net spending or premium pricing. I think that was still on the table.
I guess everything's still on the table. I don't know how to answer that. Brian, did you get any input from council on, I don't think we had any clear direction where to go with that whole situation from last budget hearing, so it's hard to...
The number that's included in the 2021 budget is the current benefits or the current cost for health insurance, dental insurance, Modern, Woodman, et cetera, plus 6% for renewal in July 1 for health insurance. That's how the number was arrived at.
So is it that 679, this one that you gave us? This is what you gave us last time with the detective add-in?
Yeah.
Yep.
That includes the new, two new positions, as well as the changes in coverage.
Where do we add back in the premiums that get paid? Like the amounts that we know we're not going to spend, the 5% that the employees pay, the amount that the retirees pay, the people that are in their first three years? Do those get added into revenue? Or, because that's, this is where we got into such debate last year because we were dealing with two different numbers and we didn't meet the 576 by the same way that we set the budget. We met it by taking out all those other items and then we met it. So while we're at this stage, I guess I'd like to clarify, where does that stuff come out? Because we know it's going to come out when we go to meet it.
Retirees do not go to an expense item at all. They go in a liability account and in and out. So retirees are not in there at all.
What about people paying the 5% premiums, the people in their first three years?
5% premiums are coming out. If you look at the bottom column in the middle, I have accounted for all the 5% premiums that are coming out. And I'm looking right now. I don't know that we have much on a, I don't know that we have many on a tier system right now.
Am I correct in making the statement that the $679,000 that was delineated in the page that you provided last time, Christina, is the net-net of what the council, the board pays on behalf of the city council?
On what?
That's...
If I'm understanding you correctly, yes.
That's the amount that the council pays on behalf of the employees, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
All right.
Money is recouped through some premiums. And I just want to clarify, so when we go into this session again with benefits, that we're looking at the same numbers, whether we do or don't take them out, I don't care. I just think we need to have that number so we can avoid what we've gone through every year. So that's fine. If it's 679 and we're not taking out the premiums, then we need to make sure when we look at the plan, that we're not taking out the premiums when we go to meet that number in May or June or whenever we are looking at that.
Well, we're taking out the premiums. The premium is being deducted from the employee, correct?
Not in the 679.
No, I'm, boy, this is even starting to confuse me. It's set in stone, isn't it, that we're deducting 5% of the premium from the employee? That's been decided and is done in this budget? Okay, okay.
The problem is, when we go to look at the plans to meet 679, then we cannot deduct the $100,000 or whatever it is that we collect in planned premiums and contributions that newer employees are making, because then that changes the numbers and we're comparing apples to oranges. And that's what happened last year, because we set out a number of 567, but the plan was like $650,000. But we came back and said, yeah, but the employees are paying this, and retirees are paying this, and the new hires are paying this. So now we're meeting the 567.
So I guess that's clarification. I guess that's clarification. So all the numbers that you have listed here are all these prior to the 5% and the, or they include the 5% deduction?
The 5% is taken out. This would be city cost only. The only one I'm estimating on is the new employees, because I don't know what the new employees are going to take. I don't know what plan they're going to take. So I'm estimating on the new employees.
But the 5% is taken out of that? No?
Yes.
Yes.
The current employees that are in their first three years, is that taken out?
We have, probably not, but we have one that'll end this year. We have one that'll end very beginning of next year. So there's not many. And I can make sure when I give you numbers, I can include, make sure those are included.
That was me. Sorry.
If I could duplicate it, I would. I can't breathe that long.
Now you won't hear me.
Okay, I'm ready to call a question unless there's other comments from the council.
I think the direction is just so that it's consistent from year to year that we're doing it the same way and we're counting for it the same way at all times. And in making sure that it's transparent that, yes, it includes all the, the 5%, it includes the stepped amount, that it's all included in our numbers here. I think that's the direction that we're all saying.
Or more accurately stated, not, the 5% is not included in our cost.
Right.
That's, the number that's in the budget has to be the cost to the city.
The net amount.
Net amount.
Yeah, for all phases of it.
Correct. Christina, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion passes. Have the record show that Councilmember Dave Call showed up at 7:03. Thank you, Dave. To start, Item Number D4, which is a wage adjustment for Melissa Labonne to $21.61 an hour. If I could have a motion? Motion and a second to adjust Melissa Labonne's hourly rate to 21.61 an hour. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D5 is a wage study. Brian, Ms. Nelson?
Julie, Julie Nelson, our HR consultant, is here to present or answer any questions.
Hi, Julie.
Hi.
I have a question, a couple of questions. Okay, so on the first purple column where it says 2020 multi-city, are those minimums, maximums, averages?
Those additional surveys that are included to the right of the regular market survey that I did?
Yeah.
We're kind of at the mercy of some of those are, could potentially be averages, average current salary, average current base or current pay versus base. And that's where I always worry about, looking at other data. As important it is, as it is to gather additional things, if it's not specifically requested in that way, that it's current hire, you know, minimum salary and minimum pay. And those typically are looking at current employee wages, so it's more of an average.
Average, okay. And when you look at the municipal data, is that South Dakota? Is it Midwest? Is it a bigger?
It depends on where those come from. Sometimes it comes from, and I'd have to look at the specific survey itself to look at the distribution of it. We did a, we did a specific municipal survey, I think that's the first column, where we looked at like-sized communities and like-sized budgets. So we were not comparing necessarily in what I would consider a geographical market, but more of a market based on economics.
Okay.
And that's where that one did come from. So we looked at specific ones. We've actually surveyed those same communities. Is that what, I don't have it right in front of me, so I'm like, is that the one that we have kind of updated this year? We had, we had actually collected data from those same communities. So it actually included some towns in South Dakota, some in Northwest Iowa, some in Southwest Minnesota, that were in that same demographic as we are, looking at economic conditions of the city as well as the size of the community.
Okay. And then how is it factored or determined, like when a position is just laterally compared with cities that are the same size versus neighboring cities?
Usually, when you embark on a survey, you kind of determine, you know, where we consider our market to be and where we potentially, you know, where have we lost people to, or where are we recruiting people from, that sort of thing. So sometimes we look at that. When you look at all of the data to the left of the green, yellow, and red, that's all looking at specific geographical areas specifically, and then job matches. Those purple are kind of, some of them are unsolicited and some of them are intentional or solicited surveys where we're looking at specific things. But those are the ones that are a little more not necessarily apples to apples, because we're, we maybe have been given this survey because we participated in or we conducted it ourselves, looking at that. So those, that's why you're going to see a lot of discrepancy in those numbers, because it's really, it's potentially looking at different data, it's looking at different sources, different locations.
The word discrepancy definitely comes to mind. I looked at the report that we did two years ago and I noticed that, so the parameters that we use to figure out are averages, or the average, the average minimum municipal pay...
minimum municipal pay was based off of a 17 munis survey and then the city of Pierre. And now we're looking at a munis survey based off of averages, a munis survey based off of maximums, and the city of Sioux Falls, and now we're using that as the average minimum municipality. I guess I don't necessarily agree that an average minimum municipality should be based off of average maximum in Sioux Falls. I guess I'm concerned because two years ago, the recommendations were very different than this year, but the parameters are very different. So I guess I'm trying to figure out, how can we best meet in the middle and figure out-
Sure.
... basic municipalities and not base them off of maximums and not base them off of Sioux Falls, unless Sioux Falls is relevant. I think there's probably some jobs that, as I've heard from staff, that would be relevant, whether it's in Sioux Falls and Brandon, and there's some jobs that would not be relevant.
Agreed. Now, two years ago, when I, and this is when, I had just been on board a little over a year, but that was the first time I participated in a wage analysis on behalf or at the request of the, of the council. And at that time, I was requested to do a, to go outside of the, the public sector and really look at the private sector, so that, so we actually focused more on the private sector at that time. But the other thing that happens, and this is just in my experience in, in dealing in the public sector, private sector has really consistent data that comes from the same sources, the same, and, and those are really consistent there. What happens, what I've found in the, in the public sector is, we get emails from, I just did one with someplace, St. Ong, Minnesota, and it was a police survey that they were doing just this last week. So we get, we, they do a lot more private kind of inner, inner, you know, in, in their little municipalities, what they feel is their compared market or whatever. So there isn't a lot of consistent data that's done and data collection that's done on a regular basis, so that's what happens. When you, when something is done every few years, or because some particular entity has decided it's time for them to look at it, they go out and seek their own data and they, and they make requests in that way. So it's more difficult, if you're going to do it on a regular basis, to really look at the same thing, because we may not have that, we might not have the results available, because somebody hasn't done that one. So it's, I don't know if I'm really, if I'm making it clear, but when we look at the, the sources that I use consistently with other wage analysis, which are the salary.com, the HR360, there's a local SHRM survey for some of the support positions, and, and the Department of Labor, those are sources that collect data constantly. And so when you go to it, and they usually update them on, on an annual basis, so that's why that data doesn't change as much, and why it's a little more reliable and a little less questionable, because that's what they, that's their job, that's what they do. Whereas some of these other ones, maybe it's the Fraternal Order Police, or it's Brandon deciding that they want to check with what they consider to be their local, or their, their market. That, those kind of data collection is just not done on a regular basis, because honestly, those people are doing other things. And so usually it's done, you know, in a, in a situation where they're having trouble recruiting for a certain position or a certain department, or maybe they're getting ready for their budget and they haven't looked at it in a while. So those, those purple surveys are really done a little more inconsistently in that way, in my opinion.
Julie, I have a question, because I've honestly, I've never seen a wage study until now. So, but this just takes the wages alone, it doesn't take in consideration of the benefits.
No, it does not.
So, like, so the city-
Now, I, I say that, now, we ask, like, when, when I did the survey, when I reached out to those same, similar-sized communities, we do ask them some real basic benefits questions, because honestly, you're right, you're getting, you're getting kind of one, one dimension of an employee's income by looking at just their wage. And we know that, because we look at, we look at, typically look at wages right now, because we're doing budget, but we're looking at specifically the health insurance, which is our most expensive employee benefit in June, because it renews in July. So sometimes we're kind of out of, out of sync with that, but from the point of view of looking at total compensation, we're only looking at part of it. Because if, if we were to, and I do have, I do have some benefit survey information, but it's more, it's more specific to either if we've asked, or if it's included in one that we've gotten from one of those municipalities. But otherwise, the, the, the most common one that we use locally is probably the SHRM survey that talks about local employers, what percent do they pay towards, towards the health insurance for single versus family, what, you know, what, what does their plan look like for dental insurance, what does their, their PTO or vacation plan look like? So you're right, it's, this is just a piece of it. And it makes it difficult when we have these conversations, because we, we, we kind of put to rest, at least for a few months, talking about the insurance, because the health insurance renews in the middle of our budget year. But most companies would look at it all in one piece, because to, to, to say we're maybe behind on wages, but we're, we're ahead on benefits, we really need to take all of that into account, because you could, you can tip the scale if you say, "Okay, right now, let's, let's go ahead and spend the money and let's bring all the wages up." And then we have a different conversation as we go into the renewal for the health insurance next year, and we say, "Well, that's, you know, that maybe is, is out of scale the other way." So we really need to try to look at it, and it's, makes it difficult because of the timing of it, to look at it all, it's, it's all a total compensation.
Doesn't it get very challenging to figure out, because there may be other entities that don't pay as much on the health insurance, but then maybe they offer life insurance or long-term disability-
Exactly, yeah.
-or long-term care, things that we don't, so then it's like those things can't just get weighed-
Exactly.
-easily.
But really what the, what we try to do is look at what, what, what's happening in the employee's pocket, you know, what's going in and what's coming out. And if you're going to, if you're going to deplete one pocket and pad the other, or, you know, fill the other, you've got to, they're, they're doing the cash flow, they're doing that math in their heads. We have to do it in a very calculated way. And that does, it's very challenging, definitely.
So how do we make it right? Like, I, I've been pretty vocal about the, the police, like this shows the police officer at Brandon getting 20.49 and the average municipality paying 26.15. I get that the benefits may be worth something, is there a way to put a dollar benefit on where we excel over other communities? I'm not saying our health benefits equate to $5 an hour, because other places have that too, and they may have things that we don't. I mean, how do we balance the scale and figure this out? Because my concern is we have, I feel, some categories that come out looking like they're kind of in line with what they should be, and they're getting these heavy benefits that are worth X amount of dollars an hour. And then we have people like the police, who are receiving the same benefits, but they're, they're showing to be underpaid on every report I've seen so far.
The, the, to further complicate the situation, it depends on the individual. Are they a single person that only, only has single insurance needs? Or are they a person whose spouse carries the coverage? So it's just, it's easier to, it's easier to calculate and look at the differences between current and market when you look at survey like this. It's more difficult to really weigh that, you have to almost look at averages, or, or specifically pull out your, your insurance billing and say, "Okay, how, you know, of this particular group, how many people are, are carrying the health insurance for their entire family versus the single coverage?" So it's, that's where it also becomes difficult to, to compare apples to apples. And so it becomes, just like every year at budget, looking at, okay, little bit of speculation, a little bit of current data, and then just kind of hold our breath and, you know, if something changes in someone's family status, they have kids, or they get married, or they get divorced, or whatever, their, their status changes in what they carry for insurance, and therefore affecting the cost differently on the, on the city. That's where it's, it's more difficult to really weigh what that is. But it's important that it, that we look at it. But I can't give you any magic formula, or anything that we can just some, put it into some software program. Probably the best thing to do, the easiest, the best thing about us is that, because our turnover is so, so small, that we don't have a lot of that unknown of who we're going to hire next week that might have, you know, might replace a person that had single coverage, and now they're going to take family. We don't have that, that kind of up and down, so we can actually, we can actually predict with a, with a, with a good deal of, of detail, just by looking at our current census and where people are. But I'm not going to have a conversation with employees and say, "Are you thinking about having more kids?", you know, or, "How's the marriage going?", you know, that's the hard part. You know, if your wife's thinking about quitting her job, those are the, those are the unknowns that we can't do anything about, so.
Right. I think that makes it challenging for attracting the best of the best for new positions, too, because you can't have those conversations about marriage or dependents-
Nope.
-but you also can't sell that to them if they're single, that's not the $20,000 family plan.
Absolutely. They'll say, "That's not, that doesn't worth anything to me." Yeah, you're right. So it is, it does become a little bit of a, of an averaging.
I mean, what do we do with this? I mean, we, we did something like this two years ago-
Yep.
-we created a new case scale, I'm not sure whatever happened to that.
And I, and I just worked on another one over the weekend. I'm always, I'm always trying to, you know, work on some different ideas. Here's, here's what my thought is right now, because from an HR perspective, when we took, look at wages, usually we're asked to do an analysis for one of two different reasons. One is because we're having a difficult time recruiting a certain job or a certain qualification, and sometimes we have to go outside of the market in order to, to fix that and to remedy that, that situation. Or you're, you're looking at it on an annual basis, getting ready for budget. And when you're, when you're not doing it for that, that certain situation where you're having difficulty filling something, you're really, my recommendation is you look at it company-wide or city-wide. You look at all of the positions. Now, there are also, once you look at the analysis and you say, "Okay, well," you usually identify the ones that are maybe outliers, up, high or low. How are we going to deal with that? Sometimes the outliers are, are pretty significant, and the budget implications are pretty, pretty significant as well. And so then we move forward and say, "Okay, well, we can't, we can't afford to do all of that right at once, but do we set a plan in place?" And we say, "Take any of these outliers," and we put a plan to say, "We're going to, we're gonna, we're gonna pick, you know, pick a, like a graduation where we're going to, to move towards our goal of meeting the market," or whatever. I, I, I don't recommend, especially when you're not in one of those situations where you're, you're, you know, you're having a difficulty hiring a certain position or something like that, that you, that you pick out a certain job or a certain department, because you're going to be chasing that probably all year round. Or you're gonna, or that there's going to be another department next year that's going to say, "Okay, it's, it's our turn." I, I really recommend that you look at it from a company or a city-wide, look at and say, "Well, okay, we're willing to, to, to maybe be 60, 80, 90% of the market." And, but our goal is to move into this, and then we set a plan in place budget-wise to, to really catch up with that, is, is, is what I would recommend.
Julie, I know a couple of years ago, you had given us your recommendations as the professional expert, and there were just a few of them at that time that you felt should be tweaked. I noticed this time there weren't any recommendations on-
I wasn't asked to do that. This time they just said, "Just do the market analysis and then we'll talk about it." I, I can go in and do that same sort of analysis again if you'd like, but I, I, that, this, at this point, they said, "Just update, update the figures, make sure that the job matches are still correct." And then I did add those additional local or regional surveys, and the, so we didn't take it to the extent that we did two years ago. And that, and that was just, that was what I was told to, to do this, just so we had the figures.
I'm not sure where the rest of the council is, but I would be interested in your recommendations along with a, a work session. I, I personally believe we should be proactive and not wait until we start to have problems. I think I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, there's an officer position, a county to the south, where starting wage pays more than, we have an officer that's been here for nine years makes, and they would get a car on top of it. So I think we need to be proactive on this and, and not wait until we start to have issues with-
Mm-hmm.
-with larger number of turnovers. That's where I'm at, and I kind of was the driving force, I think, behind asking for this, so I'll see what the rest of the crew says. Okay?
Well, one comment that I would add, I would add a third reason why you do these surveys is, is if you're having a problem with retention.
Right, right.
You didn't mention that.
Yep, yeah, I'm sorry, that, that kind of falls in, in with that. It's a, it's a, you're having trouble either filling or retaining, retaining people.
Unfortunately, I think that, I think the timing is not good right now, because if we're looking at doing some wage adjustment, it should have probably been done going into the budget process as opposed at the end of it. That's, I guess that's my issue with, with all of it at this point in time. And again, we, we've talked about benefits, and I've been in and out of these surveys many, many times, and it is next to impossible to compare apples to apples, as you said, when you're, when you're doing, when you're trying to include benefits without, without getting some sort of data from other entities. It's just about impossible. Now, I think the one thing that I'd like to see is, I know my prior company, we used to do this on an annual basis and sometimes even more, is what's the total dollar benefit to that individual on a yearly basis? So he gets a X amount of dollars in salary, and then what is the benefit package look like? How much, how many dollars does that equate to?
We actually do a, a total compensation statement.
A total compensation.
Yep. We actually, Tammy prepares those, been doing that for several years. And where we, where we put the value of the salary versus, and include the, the, the insurance benefits, the leave benefits, and, and we actually do that and, and actually print those out for every employee shortly after the first of the year, every year. And they're in, they're in the file. So we actually already compile that data, and it's given to them, but, I mean, perhaps we can use that to, to help. It's, it comes from the same kind of statistics that, that Christina maintains, it's just that it does, the, the intent and the hope is that the employee looks at that and says, "It's not just my wage, look at, look at all of this other, this, this is also, you know, money in my pocket and money to support my family." So we already do that, and so that data, that data is available. I am also a proponent of those. Yeah.
And I would just state that I think the budget has flexibility in it. I mean, we talked about COVID dollars being maybe moved for some capital improvement project or, or something. I mean, this has just become a, a circle, because this has come up before, and it's like, "Well, we need, really need to do it at the time we do benefits in the middle of the year." And then it's like, "Well, we really need to do it at budget time." And then it's like, "We really need to do it at the time we do benefits." And that's why I'd asked for this at the, that first June meeting, to get ahead of the budget, and I'm not sure why it took three months, but that's, that's why we're here with it on there today.
What Julie is working on now is a comprehensive reform of our wage structure. Our current wage structure is 90 lines long by 21 columns wide. So we're trying to cut that down to something that's a little more manageable. What I'd suggested to her was, it's always tough slotting in positions in the wage structure. Where does a police officer fit in compared to a public works versus a sergeant versus a building inspector? The state of Minnesota implemented 30 years ago now, something that was called comparable worth, where they studied all of the positions, they've got job descriptions, they then assign points to those job descriptions based upon education, training, stress, fiscal responsibility, et cetera. And then those points will tell you where in the salary structure that position should be. It's, it's not a perfect solution by any means, but at, at least it gives us a guide, and that's kind of where we're at now, is trying to slot those positions in according to relevance in the, in the organization.
I've spent a lot of time over the last, I don't know how many years, doing just that. Taking somebody from this department, comparing them to this department, who's comparison to someone else in another department. And it's, it's, it's not an easy task, but it is something that has to be done, and has to be done on a regular basis, because you can, if, if you're- you can, if, if you're, especially if you're having, um, recruitment troubles in, in one particular department, because then you start, well, we need to bump those wages up there, and you can get everything askew very quickly.
And that's, that's where we were at. Things were skewed dramatically, because we had, we had folks in the same position that were on different compensation tracks, not even, not even close to each other. And we had, we had some on line 21 and comparable same position, they were on line 26. So we've been working over the last few years to consolidate everybody onto the same lines in those positions. Um, and we're, we're close. So that's kind of where we're at with a wage scale.
Okay, so it'd be similar to, I used to work at SDSU, so we'd, and for the state, you know, you, like, you're suburban, so ideally, that's what we want, is these criterias, and then based on the number of years of, of service, and then it should evaluate like that. Okay. Yeah, that sounds good.
So, two years ago, back when we had a, a personnel committee within the council, we had redone the wage scale, and I've seen it, and it's condensed down to like, less than half of what it currently is. And last, I knew, like, two years ago, it was done, and we were just slotting a couple of people in. I mean, what, what have we been doing with that for the last two years?
It's, I mean, the, it's still in a draft form, and it, and it's, it needs to be updated, but, um, but the, there are still, we had five different potential plans with different progressions and that sort of thing that I presented. Um, but nothing has actually been approved and is being utilized. We're still using the, the old system.
What do we need to do? I mean, do we need to have a work session? Do we need to put a deadline on this? I mean, I, this is just feeling like one of those kick the can things to me.
Um, one of the, I guess I'll add, because I worked on one over the weekend, um, because we also talked about, currently, we have just the cost of living increase, and then the step increase at the person's anniversary. There was discussion of whether or not we'd want to implement a merit increase phase instead of just automatically, you're, you're here, you move up.
Well, we, we have a merit based upon reviews. We don't, we don't give annual steps unless the review is acceptable.
Right. But, but some, yeah, that's true, that's true. We do, we do a, we do an evaluation, but there was, there was discussion of implementing a point system related to the outcome of that, of that evaluation. And so, rather than having, the one that I, that I just recently kind of developed was more of a beginning and end midpoint, and then some ranges based on potentially years of service, without having a specific step, but just a more of a range that, that someone could, could move into. So it really is a matter of, I guess, identifying the one that, that we think will work the best in our situation and, and approving it. It's, it's more about the approval and getting it implemented. It's the development of it. I've got six, five, six different, different options that we could look at, and using current wages or what we might approve with a budget change, it's, it is a matter of just putting those into place. But it's, it's a commitment, and it's a decision that needs to be made before we jump off of one and into another.
Would you recommend going over those in a work session, or what, what would you need from us?
Um, it's more of what you need from me, I guess. It's, because it really has to do with what your goal is, what you want it to look like. I can, I can show you a lot of different examples, and I can show you if they're implemented, what they would look like, and then we can put costs to them. But it's, um, it's a matter of what I can do for you. I'm, you, you guys, uh, you guys let me know what you want, and I've, I can, I can jump into it immediately.
The next step would be to submit for review excluding the wages, but the slotting of the positions in the city.
The relative worth of comparable worth.
That would, that would be the next step. Because what happens is everybody gets bogged down in the, in the numbers. Well, this person's making too much, or this person's not making enough. You need to agree on the parameters first, and then you plug the numbers in, and the numbers fall where the numbers fall.
I typically look at, what, what is the market right now? Are we comparing the right jobs? Here's what, here's what that data looks like. And then we develop a plan that says, um, this is where our jobs, well, first of all, you look at the comparable worth, and you say, here's, here's where these jobs are. And then you basically overlay it over your pay plan. The very final step is putting the people in there, because that's where you find it really difficult to make some of those tough decisions. But you look at the market, you develop the plan that you know is going to work, you, you put those together, and then you start putting the people in there. The people are the very, very last thing. And when I work with any, I've worked with cities and, and counties in doing this, you, it's always good when it's, it's better when I go in, because I don't know any of the people, but I'll say, I don't know why, but this one's way off. And usually, there's a story, there's a reason why that, that one's either really low or really high. So the, the people and the actual wages are the very last thing. So we've got the market survey, I've got several different examples of pay plans. We can, we can do the comparable worth, because I really do like that point system. It, again, takes the, it, it really gives you a, a calculated way of, of determining the worth, the comparable worth between the jobs. You put all that together, and the last thing you do is put the people in.
So would it be reasonable to, uh, get it finished up by the end of the year? That's something that we could just kind of set as a target deadline?
Yep.
I just, I'm curious. Okay, I'm curious, so this is maybe more of a question for you. I know we talk about, you know, we want to, if we do the wage study, obviously, we did it for all. You don't want to just, and Julie, you said, pick a department or this department, but could council, if we wanted to just give the police officers a way, or, an increase in wages, could we do that? Or do we have to do across the board? Not saying we're going to, but I'm saying, as council, can we...
The council can give raises to anybody they want, but if you look at the...
So we can say, only Brian gets a raise this year?
That's okay, too.
Okay. I'm just curious how that was a...
If you look at the wage study on page 87, there are a number of positions that are under pay.
Yeah, I understand that. I was just kind of curious, because I think it's all stemmed from the police, so I was just curious.
My advice to the council would not be to, to select out a department or individuals for wage increases. That certainly makes HR and my job a heck of a lot tougher, because it creates interdepartmental animosity.
Is this something that we earmark any money for now, or do we do a resolution?
We, we can do a budget amendment. If we, if, if when we implement next year, in January, or whatever, if there's a significant change in personnel costs, we can certainly amend the 2021 budget at that point in time.
Yeah, it's narrowing down what you want, or where we're going to be at for parameters. I'll plug it in and see what additional cost that's going to cost per department, and then we can look at where is it coming from.
Does, does Lisa need to ask, she was asked a question, I guess, on the record. I don't want to...
The, the council can change wages at any point in time they want to, for any individual or department that they want to.
So you got your question answered. Okay.
I say, let's get it wrapped up by the end of the year and get off of this subject. This one's been around for a while.
Done with me? Any more questions for me?
Good. Thank you. Moving on, street department, tree waste, tree dump waste site. Looks like they had five proposals in the board packet, uh...
Yep. Come on up. At this point in time, um, we will start taking down boulevard trees probably in October. I think the mailings went out to the adjacent property owners for some areas of town that we will be, uh, cutting down their ash trees that are in the boulevard, starting in October, unless they've been treated. Well, at, at this point in time, we'll take them down to the pond site. Um, I wouldn't anticipate that we would open it for public use until sometime next year, as we would need to hire staff, et cetera, make sure that, um, we've got proper fencing, gating, security in place before we open it up to the general public. But that's the tentative plan, and in the meantime, we can review those five sites, um, that Raleigh and, and Devin looked at for potential tree waste sites.
I am not in favor of having a, a site that is, um, covered by, by people. I think, um, Vicki had a really good idea the other night about, you know, if we have a storm or maybe twice a year, let them bring stuff, but we got enough other things to pay for and enough other things for our people to do. I am not in favor of a manned site. And I, and I obviously don't want one that's not manned, because then we're going to really have trouble.
I'm definitely in favor of us having one with very limited timetables, whether it's a couple days in the spring and a couple days in the fall. That would be fine. Um, I, I do think it would be an easy thing that we could offer to our residents, that they would really appreciate, and would be pretty minimal for us to, to do, and the cost of the chipping has shown to be very economical. Um, the park board was in favor of us doing this for the public with much larger dates than, than just a few a year, so I just wanted to point out their opinion. But I, I, I think it would be a, a great thing to offer to our residents. It's a long ways for them to drive, to go to the landfill or muller pallets. Some people don't have means, um, to get there with pickups or transportation or trailers. Uh, I think it would be pretty minimal effort for us and mean a lot to some of our residents.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to agree, too, because I really think we need to have something here. Um, having it fully staffed, no way. Having it open, uh, to, to me, I'm just kind of thinking about an area where I used to live, it was, it was something similar, but it was done for two weekends, um, in a row, once in the spring and once in the fall, um, that it was available. So I think that's a, that's a something along those lines would work. So, other than that, we just want to know where.
I think we're all saying the same thing. Yeah.
Well, Devin did most of the legwork on this. Um, discussing with him, um, this is not a tree waste site. This would be strictly for trees that have been cut down, so it's not for people to bring their leaves at the end of the fall, because Marv's already does that twice, I think, like, five weekends, four weekends a year. So it's just a waste site. The only reason that we started looking at this is because Brian had mentioned that the council had asked about a tree waste site. So Devin and I did a little looking, and the one site that we both agreed would probably be the best is the graph site, which is outside of city limits ways, um, east of Chestnut and Redwood Boulevards. I think he's got a plan in there. It's actually listed as the graph site.
I would be in favor of tabling the long-term plan and let you guys dig into that and other options further, and just use the ponds.
Yeah, what, what we're looking at is, like I said, for our trees this fall would be at the pond site, and then we can certainly develop, um, something for next spring and fall, probably at the pond site. And we can, we can pick some dates. You know, the, the big thing with ash trees is no, no cutting of ash trees between Memorial Day and Labor Day. So we'd probably be looking at, mm, May and September, October, are some dates.
All the seasonal staff, they don't need any of that in there.
No, we, we'd have to, we, we'll figure it out. You know, if it's only going to be open, let's say, from nine to three on the first and third Saturday in May. You know, it's six hours. We would probably, uh, just have regular employees man that and pay overtime, since it's going to be a fairly limited, limited operational hours.
It definitely needs to be manned, though.
Yeah. When you do those costs, can you put in, or do you think it would be beneficial, Raleigh, to have some sort of cameras in place for security reasons, or no? I mean, I don't know how expensive they are, though. I'm just saying. And like, motion lights, stuff like that.
In the past, we've used game cameras and found people that were dumping garbages in the, the dumpsters at the parks department, or deer hides.
Yep.
I mean, yeah, it's just, it will get abused.
You know, it, down at the pond site, there's already a gate at the entrance. Um, you know, if we're going to put up a camera, certainly put one there for people that were just dropping off stuff at the gate, which is going to happen, um, as well as another, some type of camera system down at the disposal site itself, so that if they're, if they're dumping hazardous materials...
Yeah.
Or, or banned stuff. You know, the, the thing that, that a lot of people will dump is lumber, where there's two-by-fours or railroad ties. Those aren't permitted. This, I know it's wood, but the DNR doesn't consider that the same as trees. So, no, we'd have, we'd have to come up with some type of security system for both the gate and, and the drop-off site itself.
Why don't you do that, then? Get a list of, uh, defined list of what you could put into that in writing?
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, and, I mean, what the heck? Try to get something at the end of October this year. Try, test run it.
Give it a shot.
If we can do something, uh, just to give it a test drive, and, and Raleigh comes back and say, wow, that was a disaster, or, that worked pretty well.
I have pictures from previous storms, if you'd like to see them all.
Uh, so, keep moving on it. Gets, and, and maybe by the end of October, you'll be in place where you could have a, uh, I'll call it a test run on, on something out down there at the pond, where we manned it on a Saturday or Sunday or whatever, and, and see what happened. Good? So stay on it.
Here's an idea. I can't speak for the other counselors, but if you would send something out, I'd be willing to volunteer. I don't know how much good I do, but I wear my Brandon shirt and help out for a couple hours.
Would you save a bunch of money?
Yeah, see? On overtime, right? I would be willing to volunteer.
E3, Corson Railroad Crossing, uh, project. Brian, Tammy, who's?
Um, so we are under contract with CDI to do the design work already. Um, but it's, we have some details to work out on what we actually want to see out there as far as the design goes. So we laid out two options there. Option number one would pretty much be to take out about three feet of asphalt on either side, and I think we can all agree that it does need to have drain tile, which is not stated in, um, the agenda packet. But asphalt and drain tile for option number one. Option number two is what CDI recommends, and that is to also add in concrete. So the actual concrete that goes around the tracks, that would stay in place. Um, then we would replace 10 feet on either side of the tracks, so east and west of the tracks, that 10 feet would be replaced. And then in between those tracks, there's one section that's 15.3 feet wide, we would replace that concrete. And then in between the two tracks that are pretty close together, there's about seven feet in there that would be asphalt. And then we'd also put the asphalt buff, buffer strips on either side of those tracks. Um, it's pretty comparable to what we did on Holly as well at that railroad tracks. We have that asphalt little buffer strip in there. And then, of course, we would add the drain tile as well on that option number two. So that's what I would recommend to council.
Let me give Jack a chance to respond.
Yeah. I think that's overkill, especially on the concrete, and I think it's going to take a lot more time and a lot more money. Um, personally, I, I like, uh, a hybrid of the two. Basically, option one, um, adding the drain tile from option two. And I, and I think that's going to be the most cost-effective and, um, um, very durable and will last us for quite some time. Speaking from, uh, doing many similar projects.
So to add to that, the project cost for this option two is about that hundred to a hundred and thirty thousand. Um, if we would take the concrete out of that, I would think that that price would probably go down by twenty, thirty thousand. Um, Jack is right that the concrete would take longer. Um, we have to pour it and then wait for it to cure. Um, we have to pour it and then wait for it to cure. So there's probably seven to ten days in there that it's gonna have to sit. Um, we would hope that we could do half at a time so that we're not disrupting, uh, businesses out there any more than what we need to. But at the same time, I think the businesses understand that something needs to be done to it. So hopefully we can work around their schedule and be flexible with it as well.
If I'm understanding correctly, kind of the difference in the pricing is about the difference that we recoup from the development foundation with option two? So it's kinda six one way, half a dozen the other?
Right.
No offense, Jack, but I'll stay with my original motion and see where it goes.
I'll second it.
And that motion was for option two?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is second to approve, uh, going out to bid, uh, with, uh, option two as the guideline. Further discussion on the council?
Just to make clear to the council, this all has to be agreed with, with the township in a writing. So that's gonna have to get done before it actually, we can go forward. We can do the bidding, but we can't do the project without an agreement with them.
We'll get a very easy, relatively short agreement with the township.
So it'd have to be done with, uh, um, oh, uh, contingent, contingent, um, approval from the township, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll need to have the agreement with township before we award the bid.
The motion would have to reflect that as well, right?
All the, we're doing with this motion is authorizing to go out to bid, correct? We're authorizing to go out to bid. What I would suggest in this whole situation, Tammy, is that we proceed with the option two as delineated by the motion. And then we have the engineer put a deduct alternate in there to change to, uh, the way it looks to me. The only difference between the options is one foot of asphalt versus three foot of asphalt. Yeah, and con, well, difference in con, have them put a deduct alternate in there.
Sure, I can have two alternates.
Uh, that is very easily done by the engineers. Then we can determine what that caught, what the value of that change is. I mean, I, I heard you say last time that it was fifty thousand and now I'm hearing twenty thousand. So I, I'd like to know what the actual value of that change. And no better way to, to determine that with, than having a, a deduct alternate on there or some way that we can determine distinctly what the, the difference in cost is.
Do a base bid of option two with a bid alternate of, of asphalt, the other one.
Yeah. Am I correct on that, that the difference is the one foot versus three foot of asphalt?
No.
I'm not?
No.
The biggest difference is whether you replace the, uh, existing concrete with concrete or do you replace it with asphalt?
Well, that's what I wanna have in the bid alternate then. Do you, do you understand?
I understand, we can do.
Do you understand what I'm asking for there?
Yes. Yeah, we can do the alternate, bid out both of them, and then I can bring it back and council can decide which way to go.
There, there is a question about whether you take one or three feet. And I think, um, of concrete out on the outside edges. Um, to do the drain tile, I think you're gonna have to do more. Jeff is recommending one foot, um, buffer strip, but I don't, I don't think feasibility wise, you could just take one foot out and try to get a drain tile in. I think you're gonna have to take two to three, so, um, if, if it can be done with a contingent bid or an alternate bid, um, I, I guess I'd be in favor of that, but I'd like to see how you, you plan on wording it first before I would, um, be in favor of it.
I'm throwing something into your motion that I probably shouldn't be throwing in. I apologize for that. I'm just trying to make this thing work and, uh...
I'm just wondering how much time that's gonna slow us down. That track is really rough.
I'll do whatever you said, Bear. I'll go with it.
You're willing to adjust your, uh, motion to include an alternate? Who seconded?
Yeah, I seconded.
You willing to accept that?
Sure.
Okay, we'll go with a option number two, base bid with a deduct alternate.
Option number one, I got it.
Very slang terminology, deduct alternate with, with what he's saying. Uh, further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Call the roll, Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Charlotte?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes five, one. Item F one, we need to approve a Twin Rivers Crossing upside reimbursement of sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve a payment of sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and two dollars to Twin Rivers Crossing for ups, upsizing the water main or sewer main?
Water.
Water main. Any questions from the council? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F two, we have a sanitary sewer easement with Brandon West Mini Storage. Tammy, you wanna brief us on that again?
Um, that northern part of Heritage is not built yet. Um, this is kinda their last step. Once we have an easement, then they will construct it. But we do not have sewer to the back, to that north end, um, currently. And so we are allowing them to put in a forest main and their own lift station to connect into our sewer. And so they need to have access to maintain it or repair it as needed. So this just gives them the authority to do so.
We can't, we can't extend our sewer further north because it's pretty shallow now.
It is.
So we can't extend it north.
So is there a motion to approve the easement as presented?
I approve.
I'll second it.
Motion is second to approve the sanitary sewer easement with Brandon West Mini Storage LLC as presented. Any further discussion?
So then does that limit our development opportunities there or no?
No, um, in the future, if you remember, uh, when we first had that concept plan for the sand pit, we've had, well, for quite some time, probably twenty years, that a sanitary sewer line will go north out of the lift station on the south side of, of Holly, on the west side of the Big Sioux River, run north and then kinda follow the railroad tracks if and when that gets developed. So when that gets installed, then this forest main can, can probably go away. They could connect into that system.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F three, Water Tower Project. Brian, Tammy?
Um, in the packet on the very last page, I added in an exhibit of where that altitude valve building could be replaced. Um, right now, in the plans, it's proposed to be on the end of Palmer Circle. That area is very close to the existing line. You can see on this exhibit that if we put it over by the golf course, that line is gonna have to extend to the other side of the parking lot. Um, there's a few other small issues with that or large issues with that. Um, it would take out approximately half of that parking lot. So we're looking at about sixty stalls while this gets developed, or gets built. Um, another thing that the existing site works out really well is that it really doesn't impact anybody else. And so we can kinda leave it open-ended in the contract documents as far as when they build that. Cause this, uh, this project is expected to last about eighteen months. So if we're going to put it at this location, then we're gonna have to put some more additional restrictions on the contractor because we'll have to try to work around events and tournaments and everything else that are out at the golf course. So it would still be my recommendation to move forward with the current plan. And then, uh, if we needed to change something, we could change it with a change order or something along the line so that we don't hold up the project.
What's the difference in length of pipe between going across the parking lot and where is that on Palmer?
Uh, I wanna say it was three hundred and ten feet.
And the cost difference in the two locations?
About a hundred thousand dollars.
And then eighteen?
Yeah, we're still waiting for a detailed cost estimate from Stockwell's.
Right.
To, to move it to the golf course.
But connecting to an eight inch, um, water main that's existing, and that is eight feet below that ditch. And that ditch is already pretty deep. So we would have to go at least twenty feet, which means that's a pretty wide trench that has to be put through the middle of the golf course parking lot.
Has eighteen months at the parking lot would be disrupted?
For the whole project, to put up the tower. Yep.
Is there a reason that it can't be placed closer to the pipe?
Well, it would be in the parking lot. So we have setbacks, so we'll have to be twenty-five feet off the front. So that would be in the parking lot.
That'd be that big of a deal? I'm just asking, I don't know.
No, not ideal. I mean, we're gonna be taking out parking stalls and, I mean, just in the last year, we had somebody that ran into one of the streetlights. So not exactly the safest location.
How big is the structure of the valve building?
Um, right now, it's a little over two hundred square feet.
Like what's the dimensions?
Ten by twenty?
Ten by?
Yeah.
Like, no, no offense, Andrew, but I drive by there every day, at least twice, if not three, four, whatever times. And it's, it's never been packed full, that parking lot. So I don't think parky's an issue for the golf course.
During tournaments it is. And during the events, people are parked along, um, Country Club Avenue. You can add to that if you want. I don't wanna speak for you, Andrew.
Yeah, I would say the entire po, parking lot is probably full forty times a year for golf outings and events. You might not notice that because they tee off at nine AM and are done, gone at two thirty, three o'clock. So it's not like they're parked there all day. Um, weddings and stuff, it does get full. I'm not saying it's full all the time, but just that's when it's full.
I mean, just being a teacher and my summer's free, I go there quite often at all. So I'm just saying, and that might be a good compromise in regards to locations if it's feasible to do without digging up the parking lot.
So if it were just twenty-five feet back, what's the difference in price without having to go all three hundred feet back?
Should be very little. It's about where you're planning on wanting to do it over at Palmer.
Yeah, I'll have to look at it. I mean, that does change the flow of the parking lot as well. So you're gonna block one of the drivelanes. It's not really taking out the parking stalls as much as it's taking out the driveline. So maybe there's something we can do there to reconfigure the parking lot.
Well, I get that, but I also feel like as a homeowner myself, these residents bought this land thinking it was, other homes are gonna be built there. So I see both sides why, you know, I'm just trying to think of a compromise.
So if we put it right here in the front of the parking lot, um, it doesn't really allow us any room for screening. We don't get to put a fence up, or if we do put a fence up, it will take up even more parking spaces. Uh, we certainly do not have room to plant trees or do any kind of screening in a parking lot, um, which does mean that one of the complaints that I heard was that there will be this big ugly building sitting right along Aspen. Well, if we put it in Palmer, we can screen it. We can make it disappear. We're not, we're not gonna make it disappear in the parking lot.
With it's over, it, in the parking lot, I don't think we need to make, make it disappear because we have other infrastructure there. And I, I would venture that, I don't know, that we can really make it disappear over at Palmer. Maybe in ten years from now when the trees get mature. Unless we plan on bringing in some pretty good sized trees. And I don't think it's, I don't, I don't know if it's an issue, but just for the individuals that live there, I think it's more of an issue for everyone that travels out there. Now you're gonna have this big concrete building sitting in a residential area. Why not have that building over where, you know, whether it's on the north side or the south side of the parking lot? You know, personally, I kinda like it on the north side, and I can't believe it's gonna be a hundred grand just to go across the parking lot. But, um, if the consensus is to put it on the south side, I, I don't see that that should be that much of an issue in dollars. Um, maybe it's a little slight different in elevation stuff, but to me, it makes so much more sense to have it over there where it's, where we're not bothering anybody. We lose a, maybe half a dozen parking spots. I'm not sure what you're talking about with the entrance, but, um, we're losing any entrance there, but... So I, I really think that we need to do it over at the parking lot, uh, at the golf course, one way or another. Like, like Vicky mentioned, the landowners in that whole area, um, feel that the, the whole issue of putting up something like this in an area that is designated as, um, residential, that was what the covenants originally had said. I know there's a question about them a little bit. I won't go into their head right now. But to me, it just makes so much more sense to put it out at the golf course and leave the area over at Palmer Residential.
I kinda disagree with you in the sense the, like she said, the ditch is already twelve feet deep and the water main is kinda in the side of that ditch. You also have the major gas line that goes to Valley Springs, which was cut when they put the water or the sewer force main in, water and sewer main in. And the whole town of Valley Springs was without, was without gas for at least a day, maybe two. Um, personally, I can tell you, I do not have the equipment. So if there's a water leak in that area because of that, I cannot dig it. I won't dig it because my, uh, backhoe will only extend fourteen feet and you're talking twenty feet in the ground with a sewer force main, uh, sanitary force ma, or sanitary sewer and, uh, water mains coming up through there. It just, it wouldn't be physically possible for my guys to do it. So, and I don't agree with putting it in the location they kinda have there shown. It's not taking into effect, there is a sewer line that travels behind that building that goes down the hill to the golf course lift station. So I think there's some, uh, it's off a little bit. It's not showing you the, the other utilities that are located there very well, so. My two cents.
So Raleigh, what's the cost difference in having to hire a work done in that type of scenario versus your guys doing it? And what's the likelihood of that happening?
The water main break that we hired, uh, uh, first rate to do up there by, uh, I believe it was Redwood and Split Rock, that was only about, uh, nine to ten feet deep, cost us over ten thousand dollars. That's assuming you can get them to come on-site. If it happens at one or two o'clock in the morning, this could, this could cut into the pressure of town.
And these breaks, I mean, that's totally over my head. I mean, are these frequent? I mean, should we be good to go for twenty years? Absolutely no way of knowing.
I can't tell you. Uh, it's part of the reason you're replacing the core and Rushmore areas. They've been there for forty years. So.
So is the pipe on the Palmer, is that shallower?
Yeah, I believe that means only about sixty feet.
You're also talking about a line that's going to have a valve that sends five hundred gallons a minute to the core area of town. So if it does go out of service, we're gonna have other issues on how everything works their way around our infrastructure.
No offense, Raleigh, but if you have a route water break here at the golf course, you have one over at Palmer, what's the difference? If you can't handle it, you're gonna hire somebody done to do it either way. If you can't handle it, you're going to hire somebody done to do it either way.
I can handle it with a six to eight foot, even a ten-foot main, my backhoe physically will only extend to fourteen feet deep. If this is over twenty feet deep, I have no capability of doing that. I don't have the equipment, let's put it that way. I have a, I have a person that worked for a contractor fifteen years ago, he could probably do it.
It just seems the likelihood of something like that happening is so slight in a brand-new construction. I'm just kind of looking towards the future, too, so.
If, if somebody else comes in there, and if they ever decide to put storm sewer in there, now you'll have a storm sewer on top of all these utilities, if they put boxen, that was talked about fifteen years ago, so. I also know that there was comments made that we could make the building on Palmer tend to blend in more with the houses, putting a different style roof on it, maybe giving it a different color block. It's not going to look like, uh, like a brick basement, the old-style brick basements, it's not going to be a gray building like that. I don't know if anybody's seen any of the lift stations, or the booster stations around, they, they're already...
They're located all along and stuff like that?
Well, they're already in the neighborhoods. We have them in several neighborhoods. There's one on Redwood, uh, that's going to be tied into the water tower, sitting right next to the, the duplexes there. There's one in Stone Ridge Estates that's sitting right next door to a house, and then a house behind it.
I don't want, I don't want to get into an argument here, Raleigh, but weren't, weren't those houses, didn't, didn't you say earlier at another meeting, that those houses came in after those buildings were there? So it's, to me, it's a totally different situation.
I think some of them houses on Stone Ridge were already possibly built, the reason the Stone Ridge Booster got built was to send water over to the Corson Industrial Park, too. So, and I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just giving you some knowledge that I've had over the years.
Before making a decision on this topic, the item that we have in executive session for a potential litigation item has, I think, may or may not have something to do with this, this whole decision. I would entertain someone to make a motion and go into executive session to discuss that.
Can we discuss that first?
With the attorney? The fact that we would, in your, in your email, Lisa, if I may, or no, I just have a question on it before we go into executive.
I, I just have a motion to go into executive session right now, is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion is second to go into executive session. Any questions from the council on that, I guess, would be the appropriate?
I do.
Now, I can go to ask that, of Lisa, just a question.
Try it lightly.
Yes, I know. I just, I just want a clarification. In your email, Lisa, you said that your conclusions could be shared, but you would like them shared with a majority of the council's approval? Can that be discussed now?
Um, no, you would need to discuss in executive session whether or not you want to waive the attorney-client privilege, and that discussion needs to be had in executive session. So, we would need to go into executive session to discuss whether or not you want to waive an attorney-client privilege, and then if you want to waive that, we can come out of executive session. We have two potential litigation issues to discuss in executive session.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we're in executive session at eight, eleven.